There we go. All right. All right, how's that? I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
All right, Joe Rhodes Di is absent. Commissioner Schmunk.
Present.
Commissioner Stout.
Present.
And Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Any adjustments to the agenda tonight? I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. This is a meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the planning commission later tonight in our regular meeting, which follows the work session around 7:00 PM. Can we call the agenda item, Annexation Code Amendments, presented by Haley Campbell, Senior Planning Commissioner? Senior Planner, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioners. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Hopefully you guys can hear me now. So I'm just going to share my screen and we'll get started with the presentation. Okay. Hello, and thank you for attending this work session to discuss the Springfield Development Code Amendments for Annexation. My name is Haley Campbell. I'm a senior planner with the city of Springfield and the project manager for this code amendment. This work session was not pre-recorded. So I asked that you hold all the questions till the end regardless, and I've set aside 20 to 30 minutes for Q and A. So why is Springfield amending the annexation section of the development code? Sorry. This project would amend the annexation section of the Springfield Development Code in an effort to enable efficient, timely review that aligns with state law. The amendments will clarify the application and initiation types. It amends SDC 5.7.125 for initiation method requirements and application requirements to clarify what documents are required for the various annexation applications. It improves efficiency and timeliness for staff and officials to process applications and make a decision by changing SDC 5.7.115 Review to provide an option where an annexation does not require but may go to a public hearing. And it removes redundant terms in SDC 5.7.113 and addresses appropriate processes in SDC 5.7.115. You might be asking yourself, what is annexation? Annexation is the process by which properties outside the city limits become incorporated into the city and thus can receive city services. The Springfield City Council makes the decision whether to approve an annexation request. If approved, the UF-10 or Urbanizable Fringe Overlay Zoning District no longer applies. For example, if your property is currently zoned R1 or UF-10, once annexed, it will be zoned R1. Some service providers also change upon annexation. For example, if the annexation area is within a water supply district or rural fire district, the city will process a request to withdraw the annexing territory from the water district or fire district. If the property is not already within Willamette Park and Recreation District's service boundary, it will be annexed into the district at the same time the property is annexed into the city. The history of annexation. From 1864 to 1960, the city did not expand beyond the area bounded by Main Street, Q Street, 28th Street, and Kelly Butte. In 1960, Springfield annexed Thurston to the east. The area had no paved streets, sewers, or storm drains. The 1960 annexation was appealed. The court found that it was reasonable, given the pressure for new homesites, sewers, and police protection. During the 1970s, another spurt of annexation added another two square miles. Springfield has not actively annexed property since the 1970s. Annexation was and is driven by property owner requests to be included within the city limits and where the minimum level of services can be provided. Who approves annexations in Springfield? The Lane County Boundary Commission was created by the Oregon Legislature in 1969 and was governed by Oregon Revised Statutes, or ORS 199. The Boundary Commission was abolished in 2008 due to the passing of Senate Bill 417, which required the city to take on the responsibilities of the Boundary Commission. The city's role prior to Senate Bill 417 was to determine if services could be extended, request council adoption of a resolution to support the annexation, and deliver to the commission the documentation used by the council for the recommendation. The Boundary Commission's job was to validate all signatures on forms, confirm electors, review the legal description, prepare legal notices, prepare the staff report in response to legislative criteria of approval and the metro plan policies, and staff the Boundary Commission public hearings. Following approval, they would provide notice. And after the Boundary Commission was abolished, the responsibility fell to the city and the criteria and process for annexations changed. So what changed from the Boundary Commission to the city processing annexations? The main difference between the Boundary Commission and the City Council annexation include: Under the Boundary Commission Rules, or ORS Chapter 199, non-contiguous annexations were permitted, whereas ORS Chapter 222 does not allow non-contiguous annexations. The Boundary Commission approval was required if water or sanitary sewer was extended outside the city limits of the service provider, also known as an extraterritorial extension. ORS 222 recognizes extraterritorial extension for purposes of health hazard remediation. The existing code for health hazard extraterritorial extension of services is not subject to change with these code amendments. ORS 199 allowed for approval of some annexations within 25 days of submission and without a public hearing. ORS 222 allows for annexations without a public hearing when they are initiated as owner consent. The first topic we're going to talk about tonight is clarifying the three types of initiation methods for annexation. Those are owner consent, triple majority, and double majority in the code. To understand the differences between the types, consider that an owner consent annexation is when all of the owners and not less than half of the electors consent to an annexation. A triple majority is when more than half the owners who also own more than half the land in the contiguous area consent to the annexation. A double majority is when a majority of the electors and owners of more than half of the land consent to the annexation. Note on the screen that City Council may initiate annexation of public right-of-way or other public land contiguous to the city limits by resolution. Topic two, cover Springfield Development Code 5.7.115 Annexation Review. This section was amended by adding an owner consent annexation, which does not require a public hearing, unless council chooses to defer action until after holding a public hearing, including a review process for double majority and triple majority annexation applications. And for consistency and clarity, move the recommendation to City Council and appeals process to this section as they are part of the review process. On the topic of public hearings, there is a difference between the current code requirements and the minimum state requirements for public hearings. In the current code, practically everything goes to public hearing because nothing meets the exception in the code. The code requires a City Council public hearing for annexations with an exception in one narrow context: a single lot or parcel adjacent to the city limits and city services and not divisible by partition or subdivision. The reduction in minimum lot changes made during previous phases of the Development Code Update Project make the clause "not divisible by partition or subdivision" less applicable than before. The minimum state requirements for hearings, on the other hand, require a public hearing for double majority and triple majority annexations. No public hearing is required for owner consent annexation. Note that the proposed legislative code, although not required by state law, includes an option for council to call for a public hearing for owner consent annexations. We are seeking feedback on the public hearing options so that no hearing would be required for owner consent annexation with a failing septic on a small lot. This exception would apply when the property is adjacent to the city limits and city services on a single lot or parcel less than 10,000 square feet with a failing septic and in the R1 district. After reviewing annexations submitted to the city during 2023 to 2024, only one application met these criteria, but it was not an owner consent annexation. We are also seeking feedback on another option to the exception, which would be no hearing for owner consent annexations unless the property includes natural resources or natural hazards. Certain areas and districts could impede a property from being adequately served by water, sewer, stormwater drainage, or streets at the time that development is complete. The city could require a public hearing for owner consent annexations when the property is in the hillside overlay district, in the floodplain overlay district. The property includes a water quality limited water course as specified in SDC 4.3.115, and the property has a locally significant wetland or riparian area as specified in SDC 4.3.117. Half of the annexation applications submitted to the city during 2023 to 2024 included natural resources or areas with natural hazards. The two owner consent annexations did not include natural resources or areas with natural hazards, so would not have required a public hearing. The next topic, topic three, is about SDC 5.7.125, Annexation Initiation and Application Submittal. This section was amended by breaking down the initiation method and application requirements by application type pursuant to either owner consent, double majority, or triple majority. Topic four is about the public hearing requirements in SDC 5.7.130. Under the current code, notice of a public hearing is mailed at least 14 days prior to the public hearing to the applicant, property owner, and electors of the property, owners and occupants within 300 feet of the perimeter of the affected territory, any recognized neighborhood group or community organization, any affected special district or utility provider, and the Lane County Land Management Division, Lane County Elections, and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. We are also seeking feedback on public hearing notices to meet the minimum required by state law or an alternative. As you'll see on the screen, the first option is provided in the Legislative Code Amendments and complies with the minimum required in state law. According to ORS 197.7972, a local quasi-judicial land use hearing requires that the notice of the hearing is provided to the applicant and to the owners of property within 100 feet of the subject property to be annexed, where the property is wholly or in part within an urban growth boundary. This option reduces overhead costs to applicants and the city by amending the notice requirements to include only owners of properties located within 100 feet of the perimeter of a property to be annexed. The second option keeps the notice requirements as they are written in the existing code under SDC 5.7.130. That notice of a public hearing is mailed to owners and occupants of properties located within 300 feet of the perimeter of the property to be annexed. The third option could amend who, owners and occupants, or just owners, and from what distance, a minimum of 100 feet to 300 or more feet notice is given. Here are some examples of the different types of, oh. Sorry. But what are the standards that were not changed in these code amendments? The criteria of approval in SDC 5.7.140, the zoning section in 5.7.150, unincorporated land within the UGB, is distinguished from land within the city limits by the addition of the Urban Fringe Overlay District, or UF-10. The UF-10 overlay district will continue to cease to apply, and the current zoning will apply when annexation approval is granted. And that annexation is 100% voluntary. Next, we'll get into some examples. So the first is a double majority annexation on High Banks Road. It's 25 acres of property abutting in industrial use. The site is a former gravel quarry that is being actively reclaimed under a permit from the state. The request to annex was to facilitate future development of the site, like outdoor storage. The application was a double majority, as in a majority of the electors and more than half of the owners in the area consented to the annexation. The next example is a council resolution on Linda Lane. 35 acres of R1 UF-10 district property and portions of public right-of-way for Linda Lane were proposed for annexation. The property is owned by the city, and Lane County was a co-applicant for the county-owned right-of-way. Annexation was a benefit as it clarified jurisdictional range of the various roads by secting the property and allowed for the creation of a wetland conservation bank for mitigating wetland impacts from the extension of the Jasper Trunk Sewer Line. The City Council, by resolution, may initiate annexation of public right-of-way or other public land contiguous to the city limits. And the last example is an owner consent annexation where the applicant was proposing to annex 0.86 acres of residential property and a 45-foot-wide by 213-foot-long segment of Kinsley Avenue public right-of-way. The Mountain Vale subdivision, the lots to the west in the picture shown, extended the sewer line and included a stub to the front of the property. The applicant requested annexation to facilitate connection of the existing house to the sanitary sewer. Under the proposed code amendments, a property owner may not need to pay for notice of a public hearing to annex their property to the city limits if a public hearing is not required. Okay, on to questions. We now like to revisit the draft code and open the floor up to the commissioners for feedback as well as questions.
Thank you, Haley. Are there any commissioners that have questions for Haley? Commissioner Stout?
Thank you for the great presentation, Haley. There's a lot in there. A question, when there's a, in the last example that you gave, the owner requested to be annexed by the city in order to receive sanitary services. Is there any? What is the financial difference both to the property owner and to the city to facilitate that connection? I mean, they're right in the middle of the city. How expensive is it for the city to actually connect their property? And do they have the legal obligation, once they are annexed, to connect the property to the city?
So for legal, I'm going to refer to Christina for that, who I believe is in the room.
Sorry, Haley, which part of the question did you want me to answer versus which part did you want to take?
I believe it was the question on if they annex, are they required then to hook up the city services?
Yeah, when a property has a failing septic tank, then state law requires that they connect the city sewer. If they're within currently 200 feet, that's got a sunset provision. It'll go back to 300 feet unless the legislature further extends it in a couple of years. If you have a failing septic and you don't connect a city sewer, then the house would be uninhabitable. So effectively, it does require someone to connect to sewer if they want to live in a house.
I'm so sorry, repeat that. So if you have a property and the septic is not failing, then do you have to still connect?
Then you would have to connect at the time that your septic fails.
Okay.
Unless the city compels connection, and there's a process, I think, to do that, but the city of Springfield has not done that historically. We do have properties that are on septic that are within city limits.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
And then I believe your next question was about the cost to applicants to annex. Is that correct?
Yeah, both kind of the cost of the city and the cost of the applicants for, if I have a failing septic and I'm a property owner, because, I mean, I guess I'm concerned about if I were a landowner and I had a few residential properties that I wished to be annexed because those properties were all had failing septic systems, I'm kind of, I'm interested in knowing what is the financial cost to the city for those five new properties that, or the five properties that all have a failing septic system? Is that saying, oh, now the city's going to come in and provide, you know, is it $5,000 to connect to a septic system that's within 200 feet? Is it $50,000? Is it $100,000? I'm just trying to get a ballpark figure of what does that really look like?
So I can't tell you what the average cost is for to extend city services to a property, but I can tell you like the general like fee that we charge for annexations. And then along with that, we also charge a fee that we talked about kind of in the presentation for public notices. Usually if an annexation application does have to go to a public hearing. So I couldn't necessarily answer how much it would cost to extend it to a property, not knowing how close the city services were to the property. It's really dependent on the property specific. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does.
And Haley, I can maybe help here too. I'm hearing the question is being what's the cost to the city, and typically we would require the applicant to pay for that cost to extend the sewer, and they would also pay their system development charges as their portion to buy into the system as a whole, and particularly the treatment aspect of that. So there is no direct cost to the city, but often we will enter into an annexation agreement in which we stipulate if there are going to be public facilities required as to how that will be, what they're required to do, and what the city will do.
Perfect. Thank you, Sandy.
Then I have a little bit more information with what Haley stated. When someone, whether they've been annexed or not, someone goes to connect to city sewer who has been on septic, they're charged sewer connection fee, also colloquially called the sewer-in-lie of assessment fee, and in lieu of the city going and doing local improvement districts to assess the specific costs of the city extending sewer incrementally, they pay a charge of 90 cents per square foot for the first 150 feet, and then 50 cents per square foot thereafter, sorry, first 150 feet of depth. So there's some engineering calculations that go into that. But I do understand that it's, those costs can be in the order of thousands of dollars, and then private property owners also pay to connect to city sewer the cost to connect their own home plumbing system, the private lateral extension, and that's 100% borne by by a property owner, which is one reason why it's very important to do due diligence in purchasing a property and whether it's on septic.
Thanks, Christina. Thanks, Amy.
Any other commissioners?
Thank you.
Thanks. So with regard to the public hearing options, so I'm trying to understand, so is the city recommending, staff, are you recommending that option for a public hearing be somewhat reduced or you know, not as prolific or abilities, both in terms of distance and other criteria?
So based off of what you're seeing in the Planning Commission briefing memo, we provided those options, and we kind of summarized what the options were. The intent of these code amendments is mostly to comply with existing state law. So what we talked about in the briefing memo was kind of the history of annexations in Springfield, that it used to be the responsibility of the Lane County Boundary Commission. And then that changed to the city of Springfield in 2007 with a Senate bill that was passed with the state. And with that, we were responsible, you know, for making these decisions with the council, providing all the documentation for the proof that a property could be annexed, getting signatures, legal documents, all of that. And so that's when we saw the code really get implemented for the standards that we're currently seeing, and what we talked about in that briefing memo was a lot of those things, not a lot, but some of the criteria were staff decisions, were staff recommendations at the time. So we had that first option where we're talking about no hearing for owner consent annexations, and what we mentioned was that we sort of already have that in the code, but because we passed the Middle Housing Land Division criteria, where it reduced the minimum lot sizes to such an extent that most properties don't meet that minimum qualification, that they cannot already be, or they cannot be subdivided already. So what we're essentially saying is the code kind of doesn't comply with our minimum owner consent option, and so we do need to provide some other option for owner consent annexation that that doesn't conflict with our minimum standards for lot sizes in the existing code. And the first option is providing an owner consent annexation that doesn't have to go to public hearing unless council chooses to go to public hearing. So it kind of gives the majority of the option for if they want to hold a public hearing in council's hands. There is no like minimum lot sizes, or it's in the R1 district, or it's got a Goal V resource or a Goal VII resource on it. None of that applies. It's just if council elects to go to a public hearing, then it goes to a public hearing under option one. It gives them the most flexibility to choose. And then option two, that owner consent annexation with a failing septic. So that is if you are on a property that is less than 10,000 square feet with a failing septic and in the R1 district. And then of the owner consent annexations that we've had, only one met this criteria in the last, I guess you could say, year and a half. And then the last option was we have owner consent annexations, and we only go to a public hearing if you've got a natural resource or natural hazard on the site. So again, we mentioned you're in the hillside overlay, you're in the floodplain overlay district, or you've got a water quality limited water course or wetland or riparian area on your site. And of the annexations that have been submitted within the last year and a half, about half met that, but none of them were owner consent annexations.
So your, so your recommendation is that the council has the option to make it a public hearing. So would property, adjacent property owners be notified in all situations?
So yeah, great segue into the public notice requirement. So the first option is what we have proposed, which is the existing state law, and that requires us to give notice to owners of property within 100 feet of an annexing property. In the current code, it is owners and occupants within 300 feet of an annexing property. So again, that's not what the state law is. The state law was just owners within 100 feet. So what we have in the current code, owners and occupants within 300 feet. So if you are an annexing property, let's say, near a large multifamily project or another project where there's rentals or commercial or industrial, you could be providing a lot of notice to quite a few people, even if you're just a small, a small lot, single-family dwelling, and you don't qualify under owner consent annexation, or you don't elect to do an owner consent annexation. And then the third option is you could choose, or we'd be looking for feedback on what the Planning Commission or City Council would recommend. Maybe you don't want to change who receives that notice, or maybe you do, and maybe you do want to change the notice area, or you don't. It's as simple as just kind of asking for what do you think the public when it comes to wanting to provide feedback on some of these annexations would prefer? We have also had some annexations that we mentioned kind of in in the public hearing options where property owners, they, we allow for public comment, but not all public comments are relevant to the approval criteria. And that, therefore, it may not affect the outcome of annexations. So that's also something to consider when it comes to like, who do we provide notice to, and what is the reasoning behind us providing notice?
Okay, well, so so are you asking for us to? Okay, well, so, um, so are you asking for us to comment on what type of notice or what? Basically your criteria, are you asking us to comment on that or?
Yes, that was kind of my long-winded summary and ask, um, basically what you're seeing in, in the briefing memo and what I presented. Were these options? And we are looking for your feedback on what you think, um, people would prefer when it comes to receiving notice of a public hearing for annexation? And then who, um, who, and at what distance they should receive that notice?
Almost done. So, um, I guess for me, it's, uh, I'd, I'd need to understand what kind of outlays required for, you know, 300 feet, 100 feet, or some other criteria to be able to decide whether, you know, weigh the importance that the community, I mean, somebody 300 feet away that you might not think would, would care, might. And so I would err on the side of notification, but you know, if there's a huge cost involved, I'd like to understand the trade-off. Thank you.
So, um, Sarah, did you have, I'm sorry, um, Sandy, did you have a comment?
So Haley does have some cost information she can share, but I wanted to respond to a couple of things. Staff recommendation is to do the minimal, um, because that is the least cost and reduces the staff time. But recognizing that there are some trade-offs in doing that, um, in terms of people being able to comment if they feel like they need to. So we gave you the two other options as ways that you could, um, require public hearings beyond what the state law requires. If there is no public hearing, people, there would be no notice that gets mailed out. Haley, do you have that, those costs you can share?
Yes, I do. One second.
Well, Haley pulls that up. I want to clarify one comment that Haley made that I think if taken out of context could lead the commission to think you don't have an option that you have. We're not required under state law to have an owner consent process that does not include a public hearing. There is an existing code provision that allows for that, but the commission and the council are not required to include that in a recommendation going forward. So we don't, um, staff has a recommendation for, um, an owner consent process that eliminates the need for public hearing. But it is one of the options for planning commission to consider, um, that all annexations to the city and in any, um, application manner require a public hearing.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Christina. Appreciate that. Um, you have those costs. Okay. As I say, there's a couple of other questions, but let's go over the costs real quick.
Okay. So what you are seeing on my screen is, um, all of the annexations that have been submitted within the last year and a half. And we're talking about a, a notice fee that we collect from applicant for annexation. That fee is a flat $691. And then we broke it down by the amount of people that were notified within that 300 feet. Uh, the cost to include that notice in the newspaper, which we are required to post at least twice, um, once a week, um, and, and then the cost to mail to those property owners. The current cost for postage is 68 cents. That's going up to 72 cents, um, effective July 1st. So you can see here, um, our rates and depending on who was mailed to, so, um, let's see.
Haley, we can't see very well. Could you zoom in?
Yes. Is that good? Okay. So just looking at, we'll, we'll highlight the yellow ones because I believe those were owner consent, um, annexations. So $271, um, to be posted in the newspaper. We mailed to 97 people and the postage was $65.96. The other owner consent annexation was mailed to 130 people. And again, that flat $270 to, um, post in the newspaper came out to $88.40. So combine these two, $270 and $65 to get your, um, your fee to notice people for those public hearings. And then you can also see, um, maybe that what they objected to. So we did ask the planners, the senior planners and current planning to provide, um, if any comments were received. Some objected to the future development. Um, other developers were seeking reimbursement for frontage improvements. But we also looked to see, um, if they met any of the criteria for under 10,000 square feet with a failing septic and in the R1 district, they didn't meet all these criteria. But they did not have, um, a goal five or goal seven resource. They weren't in a hillside area or floodplain.
Um, Haley, can I ask a clarifying question really quickly? That 691, um, is that in addition to? Or is that part of what's broken down there? Because the 270 plus the 65 that you referenced, clearly that doesn't add up to 690, 91.
That is just part of it. So that's, that's basically like the notice portion, I guess you could say, to provide those notices to the public. But that doesn't include like the hourly rate for the planners to go out and provide the notice. They have to go and post the notice at least four times on the property itself. Their time to put together the notice that is then put in the Chronicle that is sent to the property owners. So I, I don't have that estimate of how much it would cost, how much out of, out of that $691 is just staff time and fees. So obviously, like you said, the, these, these fee amounts don't add up to that 691. That is where that extra money is going, is staff time and resources.
Yeah, that makes sense. So then would, if we, if we went with state minimums, what, do you have an approximate idea of what that 690, 91 would reduce to?
I do not at this time. Um, but I know that we are working on some, um, budget and master fee assessments, um, on another project. So I assume that will be something that we'll calculate, uh, through that project at the same time we're working on this.
All right. I want to recognize Commissioner Salazar.
Thanks. Maybe, um, I, I did hear one thing that you mentioned Haley, um, regarding public notices, that those changes will, those costs will vary depending on how many people live in, like, depending on the decision we make, whether we decide to just notice owners or owners and occupants. For example, the example that Haley gave is if you live next door to a, uh, apartment building, you're going to have a lot more neighbors than if you live next door to a single family house. So there's going to be a lot more notices. So I think the, the hundred, it's, 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 it would be difficult to really get a sense of, um, the, the cost difference between 100 versus 300 feet. Cause there's so many variables of how many neighbors could fit in that, um, that range. But, um, besides to say that generally you would expect to have incur less fees for 100 foot range than 300 foot feet. So that, that's kind of what I was hearing you say Haley. Um, I think in general, I, yeah, I'd, I mean, it's tough. I, I, there's a balance between, there's always a balance between, um, public notice and giving the public an opportunity to speak, um, and, and have a say in how their community is shaped versus the costs that are, that are incurred by the city and staff. I think, I, I guess it would be helpful for me to, to, to hear of those annexations you gave a list for just now. It seems like most of the, almost all of the, um, objections or comments that you received were, that, or that, that city staff received were specific to a development. And I think that's one thing that's, um, interesting to me that is that most people don't care if it fall, if a property falls within the city limits or not. They care about what's going to happen on that property. So I'm curious to, if you know what percentage of those developments actually, um, that if the, the development itself was or will be, um, subject to a public hearing through a separate process, whether they have to annex a property first and then they have to go through a zone change. How many of those did the, would the public have gotten a chance to, um, give public testimony during a separate process related specifically to the development?
Well, we had, um, 14 annexation applications within the last year and a half. And of those, um, two that, um, as an owner consent annexation, they would not have required a public hearing under the current code and under the proposed, um, code. So a significant portion would have required that public hearing, uh, notice be provided.
Haley, I think he's asking what happens after annexation with the development? What is, um, and I don't know if you can look at your list and see what the next steps were. Which of those would have, um, required a public hearing for a variance or a master plan or a zone change, as he mentioned. But I'm, I'm guessing most of the applications would not have required a public hearing at the next level. That there would have either been, if it was for housing, they could have gone direct to building permit or a type one application that is a clear and objective. Or if it was not, um, residential development, a subdivision is a type two, that's a staff decision. A lot of the MDS or site plans are, um, level two, which is also staff decision. So I think you're right, Commissioner Salazar, that most people are actually concerned about the development. And that's one of the reasons that, um, Haley had brought up before as people comment, uh, if their comments are relevant to that application. So most people are going to want to comment about the development, but that's not really the decision for the annexation itself. So are we helping people by encouraging them to come and testify on something that isn't going to make an out, a difference in the outcome of the decision? Or is it better to at least let them know initially what is happening? I mean, that's kind of, um, that, that balance that you're talking about before. And a lot of this, we're not asking for decisions tonight, but I think if you could, what would be helpful, most helpful tonight is, things that Haley could either, um, look into more, like you'd asked about the difference in costs. So we can maybe look at some more information about costs, but also how we present these in the public workshops that are coming up. And then, um, get you best prepared for after the public hearing, um, making your recommendation to council in August. So you are scheduled to have a public hearing on August 6th. And we'll have comments and such. So what will help us help you be prepared to make that recommendation?
Uh, I, I think we have a few more questions here. So, um, I want to give commissioners that haven't spoken at an opportunity. And I know that Commissioner Salazar and Commissioner Stout also have some follow-up. So Commissioner Webber?
Thank you. Um, kind of go on with what Sandy was saying. I mean, I, I look at, cause I think mo- most people here are probably aware of what's happened out on Pheasant Boulevard. And I mean, I think that was a pretty, you know, with my wife being on council, I mean, that was quite a, uh, it was on the news and all those things. And the annexation, as I understand it, and correct me when I'm wrong, uh, for sure, is that it, that's separate from the development. And you're right, everybody there was concerned about the development. I mean, what, what's it going to be? Cause they were showing all of these things. So my, I guess my, long way to my question is, do any of these changes to the annexation, would that have changed anything with that?
On the Ganson application, um, we did receive public comments that were relevant to the criteria of approval. They just, um, the, the, where they were, the comments conflicted with evidence that staff collected from fire marshal's office or other, um, entities. And so the council weighed the expert evidence.
Right. Oh, no, no, no. I agree with all that. I mean, that, that part of it.
So there were some comments that were relevant to the criteria of approval for annexation. There were a lot of comments related to the development itself. The proposed code amendments, in that case, the property is vacant, so there are no electors that reside on the property. And there was 100% consent, the hu, the owner of the property filed the application. So, um, this, um, that property is an example of one that would be eligible for, um, owner consent annexation without a public hearing if the council ultimately adopted that option. Um, and then with dependent, with the residential development especially, depending on the type of development that's pursued, there may be no other, um, even public notification, um, after that point. Type one decisions that are essentially based on a plan review at building permit stage, um, do not require any even public notice. Type two decisions that are your typical subdivisions or site plan reviews have a mailed public notice opportunity to comment in writing. And then if somebody does comment in writing, there's a notice of decision that goes to them and they have the opportunity to appeal it to you as the planning commission and have that public hearing. That happens very rarely and hasn't happened with residential development in 10 years. So, um, just to give you an idea of how that would have changed for that application. Similarly, there was the, the Findlay Heights annexation a couple of weeks before that. There was a lot of public comment, um, that was the steep slopes. That was directly relevant to criteria of approval and was information that staff did not have previously and did not find, did not get information from the applicant or from other city staff to, um, can't to overcome, um, the public comments that were raised. And so the council ultimately denied that annexation as a result of public comment. That was also a 100% owner consent and annexation that would not have bonded to public hearing necessarily, um, under that option.
Thank you. Sure. Um, Commissioner Stout and then Commissioner Salazar?
Is there a distinction that can be made in terms of the notice between different zoning types? For example, if we're looking at R1, we have different kind of notification that's required rather than, you know, heavy industrial?
So that was a, um, a, something that we considered with the public options, with the notice for public options. I think we, uh, we did not move forward with that option because we were unsure, um, if that was something that we wanted to distinguish between. So, um, especially for situations like housing, um, you could have middle housing, which in general is a type one application. Um, and we, it, no public hearing is required. It's a straight consent, uh, approval by staff. Um, so it really wouldn't matter what the zoning was of the property. And I couldn't comment on what kind of applications we would receive for commercial or industrial properties and public notices received for those. I can look into, um, with the applications that we have here listed in the last year and a half, uh, what percentage of those applications would have been commercial or industrial? But a general guess is probably not very many of them.
So where I'm going with all this is I want to, uh, I really appreciate Sandy's comment about trying to balance the needs of notification versus an exercise in frustration. Because ultimately the council on the Pheasant Lane had absolutely no choice in the matter because neighborhood comment was not a part of the, uh, criteria for approval. So if that's the case, I have no interest in raising the hackles of 300 more feet of people that are just going to come and exert an exercise in frustration for the sake of wasting your time, my time, the council's time in the future. Council can literally do nothing about it without facing a personal lawsuit. So I'm not excited about notifying any more people than absolutely have to, with the exception of if the state law were to change and we were to have more discretion in our communities, which in my humble opinion we should, but we don't, thanks to the state. I'd be more interested in actually having a much broader notification in that place. So that public comment could actually be again, a criteria of approval for annexations. Because right now, once it's approved through annexation, you can build whatever you want on there. And with, if it's R1 because of the middle housing requirements. So that's my frustration that I'm bringing to you. And that's why I ask about the different kinds of zoning requirements. Because I might, I might like to see a little bit longer zoning or larger zoning notification for a certain commercial properties, for example. But perhaps if we can't do anything about the R1, uh, zoning anyway, then why bother those around us who can't do anything about it? Thank you.
Yeah, I think similarly, I, I'm in, in favor of going to the state minimums. I think I, I'd be open to, um, with the exception of maybe within 100 feet, um, notifying, um, both owners and occupants. Seems to strike me as a, as a middle ground there. Um, but yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a, necessarily a need to, um, get more people invested in a process that, that, um, maybe the, um, the criteria of approval, um, just come up less in, in public comment. Um, there, the, the public is generally less, um, familiar with the criteria for approval, especially regarding annexations. In regards to, to the other, um, items you're seeking, comment on, I think in general. In regards to the other items you're seeking, comment on, I think in general, I think for the the small lot size 10,000 feet failing septic system, that makes sense to not require public hearing. It seems onerous if somebody's septic system is already failing, they're going to have to address it. And having less onerous requirements for, for that property owner and not requiring a public hearing, I'm in favor of. I think less so for the natural hazards areas, hillside overlays. I mean, Christina brought up the, the, the previous example of yeah, I think if natural hazards come into account, I think it's helpful to get public information that maybe staff isn't privy to. Last point I'll raise is just, I don't know the, the language around notifying recognized public or neighborhood groups that doesn't seem clear and objective to me. I think I understand the point. I mean, we don't have any neighborhood associations in Springfield, but maybe one day someone might start a neighborhood association. But I think in general, I'd be in favor of striking that just because the language doesn't seem clear and objective to me in terms of what qualifies as a recognized neighborhood or public group.
There is municipal code that talks about what specifically is a recognized neighborhood, a group and the responsibilities and the process for that. And also annexations do not need to be based on clear and objective criteria. Just as a, but that's not in any way to argue the substance of your comment. I just want to clarify those two points.
No, that's, that's helpful. And I think that, that, that addresses my concern about including that point. So thank you again, Haley, for the presentation and for responding to our questions.
Before I kind of wrap up comments here, I wanted to make sure that every commissioner has had an opportunity to say what they need to say. Okay. I, I would say for, for my perspective, Haley, again, I think you did a great job tonight. Thank you for that. I tend to concur with Commissioner Stout and Salazar on the perspective of if, if we can't affect real change, then it doesn't seem like it's a good use of the city's time or the community's time. So I would be in favor of public hearings in, in those situations where, where there could be some you know, where the decision and the outcome could, could be affected. And so where, where it pertains to public, public comment is usually around development, not about annexation itself. So that, that piece of it. And then the only other piece that I would comment on is I would like to see if we're going to reduce the burden on staff and, and all of that. I'd like to see the financial burden for the applicant go down as well. Because it doesn't seem like if, if we're going to reduce the, this, the burden on staff. And not in every case do we, it sounds like that 691 is kind of our flat fee. But if we reduce it to state minimums, then the reporting goes down and so is staff time and those kinds of things. I think the, the reassessment of those fees would, would be appropriate as well. Or at least to be looked at in that case. So hopefully you got some, some good feedback to, from us. But overall, I think that it's it's in a good place.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and feedback.
Right. So now that we've gone through and everybody's had an opportunity to comment, I hereby adjourn the work session. And with that, is there any reason to? Can we just go right into our public hearing? We're at seven o'clock. So excellent. All right. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Weber?
Present.
Commissioner Stout?
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Salazar?
Present.
Vice Chair Buck?
Present.
And Chair Rhodes-Dy is still absent.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Staff have no adjustments.
Thank you. So it is time for our pledge of allegiance. For those in attendance, please, in person, please recite the pledge. Those online are muted. So I'd like to I'd like to move to for the approval of the minutes from the June 18th, 2024 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes that's published in the packet? Hearing none. The, the minutes are approved. And now we are at business from the audience. We will now take any business from the audience. This is a time in our regular agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission, not otherwise on our agenda tonight. Later in their meeting, in our meeting, there will be a public hearing specifically to hear comments regarding the comprehensive plan diagram and zoning map amendment for the property at 5230 Highings Road. Is anyone online or in the audience? Would like to, do we have any business from the audience?
Not at this time.
Thank you. All right. So we don't have any business from the audience. So then Sarah, just confirming, we can move on to our, our, our regular agenda item next?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. So I'll call the agenda item comprehensive plan amendment and zone change Highland. Oh. And then do you?
Are you ready for me to read the quasi judicial statement of rights?
Absolutely.
The role of the planning commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the planning commission are also to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, the planning commissioners must state whether they have any conflicts of interest, such as family, financial or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. If a potential or actual conflict exists, the commissioner will state whether the, say, the type of conflict, the nature of the conflict, and whether he or she will step down from the planning commission during the case, which is required for an actual conflict. Commissioners must also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. If any planning commissioners have such contacts or knowledge, they must disclose the substance of that contact or knowledge. A copy of the procedures and agenda for tonight's hearing and copies of the staff report have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in tonight's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council, I'm sorry, to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the Land use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the city council closes the written record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so that people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise any concerns about conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond or city council to respond, to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you can ask the commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the planning commission hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the planning commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. And there will also be a city council hearing in the future on this matter. Regardless of whether the hearings continue or the records held open for any other reason state law provides, we must hold the record open for at least seven days after it's closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application unless the applicant waives that right. Please make sure that your testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for tonight's applications are in Springfield Development Code sections 5.14.135 for comprehensive plan map amendment and 5.22.115C for the zoning map amendment. The criteria described in more detail in the staff report posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org and will be summarized by staff in their presentation this evening. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. Chair, it's now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Thank you, Christina. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and begin by checking in with our planning commissioners to see if anybody has actual or potential bias. Can we do that through roll call?
Commissioner Thompson?
No, in, no conflicts of interest, bias or ex parte contact.
Commissioner Schmunk?
No bias or conflicts.
Vice Chair Buck?
No, no conflicts or, or bias. I do have the potential conflict as I am a, an insurance agent in the area and I do own property in in Springfield. And I do have knowledge of the site as that's kind of on my commute. When I drop my daughter off at middle school, I drive down Highings to, to get to work. So I'm familiar with the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
No conflicts of interest, bias or ex parte contact. Thank you.
Commissioner Salazar?
I have no ex parte contacts, bias or conflicts of interest.
And Commissioner Weber?
No conflicts or bias.
At this time, I'd like to see if there's any challenges to the impartiality of the planning commission or objections to commissioners jurisdiction to hear this matter. All right. Hearing none, I would like to turn this over to senior planner Andy Limberg for his staff report. Thank you.
So Andy, while the interchange there's, you know, you're saying is that capacity, the access to that property along the west side. So you've sort of looked at that and it looks adequate for the type of facility that they're asking about. So if the sites then open up to whatever, would the owner have to come back to the city to say they wanted to bump it up to an RV repair facility? Would they have to come back to the city? City would look at traffic counts for that type of thing, whatever?
So it is possible, and I guess conceivable, that there could be an increased type of activity on the site. We increased trips, so they have to fall. And the applicant would have to provide, and they're traffic engineers here too, specific questions. They would have to provide evidence supporting their not exceeding that for the applicant business. So there's a little bit of free board tax, but they'd be limited by that trip cap. And whatever type of activities associated be proposed, other than just storage, as an example, or probably a static store, or something, maybe boat trailer, could be boat, a few trailers. And if there's something that's been integrated more frequently with regular trips, like a service facility or fuel station or something, under the light of this treaty.
Okay, well, I just did a good comment. I'm in support of the proposal, but that corner where you access the street, and I don't even know what street it is that runs along the west side, what the name of the street is. No, it's 52nd, okay. Okay, well, accessing that 52nd Street from that corner, it's a mess, I think. So, I mean, if the trip count's not going to push it over, maybe the traffic engineer would comment more on that. But I guess I'm concerned with that. And that's, you know, if they're bumping up the facility to more trips, you know, but that seems like an expensive solution there. So, okay, thank you.
Andy, Mr. Stott?
My only other concern is, I think it's a great presentation. I'm in favor of it. Again, it's that High Banks 52nd interchange, because there's a bike facility there as well. Is it possible? I would be interested in even just some additional paint. As we've painted nearby there where High Banks turns into 126. There's additional green paint on the ground there just to demonstrate where that is. I think greater visibility for those who do use that road as a bike lane. You will have a slight increase in traffic. It's not going to be much, but it may be enough to be worthwhile, just adding a little bit extra paint for the safety and security of anybody who's using the facility as a bike. That's my only suggestion. Otherwise, it's a bang-up deal. It's a great, it's a great proposal.
Any comments by commissioners? Okay, I just wanted to clarify one thing. I believe the answer's pretty clear here, but the site's going to be accessed from 52nd Streets. So it wouldn't need to necessarily impact any of the other businesses or properties that are there. And you'd be able to access it off of 52nd without impacting. Okay. The only other comment that I would make on this that I think is worthwhile is that the proposed use for the site with the static storage, I think that that does two positive things. First of all, as we're looking at reducing the number of, with the codes that we have in place, you know, parking spaces per unit, those are reducing. And so this gives an option for RVs, boats, those kinds of things. And I think that that's really supportive of our housing efforts. And I don't, and I don't know of any other available site like this right now. So I think that those are really positive things, and I think they support the community in various ways. So, thank you.
Can I just, I just want to double check on something from Commissioner Stout. Was that intended to be offered as a new condition of approval or something to take into consideration during the site planning?
So that you could take into consideration during site planning? Thank you.
All right. Is there any public testimony at this time in favor, neither a favor opposed or opposed? Will you please begin by stating whether you're opposed in favor of it or neither? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other public comment tonight?
Not at this time.
Thank you. All right. I think we're at the spot for, would the commission like to close the public hearing and public record or continue to hold open for another day? I think we're going to do that by roll call. Is that correct?
Chair, I move to close the public hearing for this item.
Oh, second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Now we'll move to the roll call.
Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Vice Chair Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
So motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. We will now hear business from the planning commission. Are there any reports of council action tonight?
You actually need to deliberate. You've just closed the hearing. We need a decision if you could do that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So the motion carries. We need to close the record. Okay, I'm a little off here.
Just close the record by the vote. Now we need to.
Okay, so the record, the record's now closed. Could I have a roll call for the vote? I need a, I need a motion.
I move to Christina help me with the language here to approve the.
I think, oh, you're the best.
Orders and attachment four and five.
I move to adopt the orders in attachment four and five for this agenda item, recommending that the city council approve the Comprehensive Plan Diagram Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment without any additional conditions of approval.
Sorry, can you, with the listed, with the listed conditions?
With the listed of conditions of approval.
But no new ones.
But no, no one's correct.
Second? Thank you. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I will now call for the vote. Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Commissioners Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Vice Chair Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Do we need, do we need to close now and move on to this? Or the business from planning commission is part of the public hearing, correct? Okay, so do we need to close the public hearing now?
I'm assuming that your first motion was intended to close the hearing and the record.
It was, okay. Just making sure I'm not skipping a step again. Okay, we'll now hear business from the planning commission. Are there any reports of council action? Mr. Stott?
This is for, excuse me, this is for a council report for May 20. Apologize for the delay. This was in a work session. There was Springfield Police Department was awarded accreditation through the Northwest Accreditation Alliance. The alliance assists law enforcement in maintaining standards of best practices. Lieutenant George Crowley was praised for his efforts in obtaining the accreditation. Pretty big deal for the police department. Mary Bridges Smith presented a review of the city council's operating procedures and policies. Mayor Van Gordon made three proclamations. The, and the routine matters in that included software contract and March and April dispersments. Agenda items included amending city code to limit liability use of public trails, a liquor license endorsement, Jasper trunk sanitary sewer extension, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into local agency certification program with ODOT for federal aid projects. And then business from the council included Glenwood land use application initiation, or sorry, from the city manager, property management contract, annexation of seven acres. And this included several testimony from several landowners. Thank you.
Thank you for Mr. Stott. Any other? Commissioner Salazar?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I had the, or I was, I watched the meeting from June 17th, city council meeting from June 17th. And there were no items that were directly related to planning commission business. There were a couple of items that were ancillary connected. Items that were brought before the council were related to a couple of sites that the the city has purchased for future affordable housing development, colloquially known as land bank sites. Additionally, the council did approve a number of annexations, including one related to Pheasant Lane that we discussed in our previous work session. That specific annexation had a great deal of public comment. And additionally, a proposal was brought to the council to consider allocation of CDPG funds for the rest of the year based on a recommendation from the CEDAC. And in the end, council determined that they could allow, they would allow one specific use to pay down a loan for that. Those funds, there were two other proposals that were brought to the council, and they needed more information. So they brought that to the July 1st meeting.
Any other reports from council action?
Vice Chair Buck, I had a report from June 24th, which I will be prepared to provide at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business from the planning commissioner reports on council action? Okay, I don't hear any other, any other business from the planning commission? Okay, I'm not hearing any, any business from the development of Public Works Department?
Yes, before I talk about your upcoming meetings, I do want to say that the focus for this legislative session, or one of the focuses, is likely to be on transportation. So in 2017, we had House Bill 2017, which provided a lot of funding specifically for transit. It provided funding for 42nd Street in exchange for us taking on jurisdiction for Pioneer Parkway. So we're gearing up for.
It's a point of contention with the state, so I just want to be on the record since this is recorded that there was not an exchange. They were both captured in the bill though.
Thank you for clarifying that. So the, because we're anticipating a big focus on transportation, and the state is also facing financial challenges in maintaining our road system, there is a joint transportation committee that is doing a tour of the state. So this is both from House and Senate members. And so they will be in Eugene on July 17th. I believe Counselor Blackwell will be participating, doing a roundtable discussion to represent the city, and Counselor Mo will be there in his capacity as being on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. But there is a public hearing that evening if you choose to go. I don't yet know where it is. But it starts at 5:00. If you do choose to speak, make sure you don't speak on behalf of the city since we already. Um, uh, but it starts at five. If you do choose to speak, make sure you don't speak on behalf of the city since we already have um, our elected officials speaking on behalf, but you may be interested in following or providing your own personal testimony. Um, and once I know information about that, I will add it to the Planning Commissioner page on Springfield Oregon Speaks, and um, Sarah can maybe send out an email as well. Um. The, so we have, um, upcoming work session and public hearing, as we've already talked about, for August sixth. Um, Andy will be back for a plan amendment, another plan amendment zone change on August sixth, and then again on September fourth, so you're gonna be um, well versed in plan amendment zone changes with Andy. Uh, and so we are not anticipating having two meetings in August, so just the meeting on August sixth, and then coming back on September fourth. Um, Andy, you have something to share?
Um, any, any other business from the Public Works Department? All right, uh, hearing none, I believe we're free to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.